All right, six o'clock, I'm calling the Norton School Committee meeting to order for Wednesday, November 6th. First thing, Pledge of Allegiance. Meeting is being recorded by Norton Media and Norton Public Schools. Anyone else is recording, just let us know. First thing up on the agenda is vote to approve the minutes from October 21st. What's the motion? All those in favor? And the next meeting, which was two days after, which was the October 23rd. Everyone got a chance to review the minutes.
So I couldn't vote on the 23rd.
Yeah, that was one assumption.
Sorry, for the mini minutes for October 23rd. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Sure, you good for the warrants you want?
I reviewed the following warrants, school expense warrants, October 23rd, 2024, $739,950.98 and school payroll warrants, October 17th, 2024, $1,142,126.56. They wish to enter them into the record, public record.
Next up, student rep updates.
Good afternoon, everybody. The LGN, they're holding their annual booster fun run this Friday, November 8th. At the LGN, our students and their amazing families are so close to reaching our goal of $20,000. The funds raised will go to support learning materials, research supplies, and enrichment. And then from the yell, last week, our HPTO with unlikely books were brought in another, an author. George Tam, who did two presentations for our student about his books, Oliver and the Great Big World. Students heard about where Mr. Oring got his ideas and he wrote his graphic novels. It was amazing experience for them. As mentioned, last school committee meeting, our students have done a great job with our PBIS expectations of being hashtag respectful, hashtag responsible, and hashtag safe, earning hashtags the Lord, where we already handed out now close to 150 books for handing in 50 and then 100 hashtags for their second book. Book for point for the book vending machine. We do not have close, we have done close to 100 good news calls of the day so far. Our LTT, Lancer Learning Time, RTI, Response to Intervention Block, for our IMTSS have been running smoothly since the start of the year, where students are getting the academic support they need each day during the school days as they rotate through different standards and groupings based on their assessment scores. Our faucet of IMTSS tier-two innovations for our students behaviorally have been very successful this year with our check-in and checkout system, a point students have been earning throughout the, throughout the day. Students on the CI slash CO system have been doing so incredibly well. I don't know what any of that means. So for the high school, we have a lot of things happening in the next several weeks. The student council is in the process of planning Spirit Week heading into Thanksgiving, Wednesday, tomorrow, tomorrow, next Wednesday. Over 100 NHS juniors will be inducted into over 10 honor societies. There'll be a powder puff football game, hallway decorating, spirit days in the big competition at the Pepperelli on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. December, Norton High School will have the upperclassmen semi-formal dance, the winter concert before the long weekend break. That's all for this thing.
Any questions from students? Next up, opening school remarks with Principal Paul Barrett.
Want me to stand, sit?
You can present right from there, Mr. Barrett.
I'll use my principal voice. Excuse me, I have to put my old man glass. So I, I did not prepare slides, just prepared some remarks, so hopefully that, that's okay. So this is obviously a fresh start this year for JCS. We have a lot of new staff, myself. And so what we're trying to do is bring a lot of new energy to the school while also respecting the traditions that are in place. There's a lot of really terrific traditions in place here at JCS. I'm excited to share my first opening of school remarks with you as principal. I've enjoyed my first few months being part of the JCS and greater Norton community. And one of the things I've noticed is how helpful and supportive people have been for me as someone new. And I, I know you're probably not surprised by that, but it's really nice for me, someone new coming. So, thank you for that. And so even though I'm not a new principal, it's been exciting and a little scary to start my 30th year in education at a brand new school. Really glad to have the opportunity to be here in this school. So I'm just going to talk a little about things that I think you know, but just to make sure that everybody knows what's been happening. So because of all the hard work of our teachers and staff and the support of our students' families, JCS has gotten off to a great start. Everyone's comfortable with the daily routines and the expectations. And when I stop in and visit classrooms, there's a lot of active learning taking place across all the grade levels, including our Little Lancers. Maria Blackburn, who's our new early childhood coordinator, has been an excellent addition to our school. And we're building a really strong leadership team together. So you know, as a school committee, there are a lot of new curriculum initiatives in place at the elementary schools. And teachers are spending a lot of time collaborating within their grade level teams to learn and successfully implement the new ELA program, Intereading. The professional development provided by the district to help teachers get familiar with the new program and the materials has been a really important support for our teachers. And they're looking forward to learning more about how to use the new program as effectively as possible in the next few years. So for example, I know that Dr. Ackman shares feedback from the PD. The feedback from the PD about intereading has been consistently extremely positive from teachers, not just at JCS, but the other schools as well. And I think that says quite a bit. My understanding is that the Norton teachers had a key role in evaluating, selecting intereading. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why, because they have such positive buy-in for the program. I think that's really going to help moving forward. So as you know too, in the last three years, it, it takes about three years at minimum to fully implement a new curricular program effectively. And our school's building on the work that was started last year when Norton adopted stepping stones as a new math program and purposeful people from Character Strong as a social emotional learning program. So teachers have already expressed that they feel much more confident teaching math using stepping stones in the second year, which is excellent. And we're also using the lessons and resources within Character Strong across our school community, including in our daily morning announcements that we do with the kids. I shared some of those things with parents in, in the JCS journal. And so I think from what I've noticed being new, probably the most significant factor in the success of our students with these programs is the dedication of our teachers and staff. And I've been really impressed in this first week. JCS as a school values a culture that focuses on being kind, being safe, being respectful, being responsible every day. So three out of the four hashtags match with what you heard from the yell school. But we still value having fun while we learn together. This is a pre-K to preschool. Right? Kids should have fun sometimes at school. And so one of the ways that we have fun as a community is our students leaving the morning announcements every day. If you've been in the school during morning announcements, it's hilarious because we have Little Lancers all the way up through third grade doing it. And so they all take different roles and they have a lot of pride doing it. So every day, we say the pledge of allegiance together, the students read it, we celebrate birthdays of students and staff, and we share things from Character Strong about what we're working on. We're continuing the JCS tradition of hosting a Veterans Day celebration at the end of this week. And so our student representatives asked what was happening at JCS. They said, I'm going to share that tonight, so I'll hold off. We're really excited. Two students from Norton High School joining us to play the trumpet as part of the ceremony. Many of you or some of you know I'm a former music teacher and my wife is a music teacher and she's a trumpet player. So this is very exciting for me. And this year, like the past years, we, we've had members of the Norton VFW joining us. We've also reached out to families this year and invited any family members who are veterans to come and join us. That's something that we did at my prior school. And it was really, really powerful to have kids standing with dad, moms in particular, where a huge impact on kids, grandma, grandpa, uncle. So we're looking forward to that this, this year, recognize our veterans and thank them. My own father was a veteran. Something we've added to the school culture and for the three parents who are on school committee, I apologize ahead of time. We've been singing some silly songs together. So being a former music teacher, that's something that, that I've been trying to do with the kids. And Dr. Ackerman got to see this. The clear favorite song so far has been the Swingin' Bull song, which has lots of crazy movements and it gets faster in dropping out. So we're going to continue adding those types of things to build, to do those sort of community builders together. Our school parent organization is also making a fresh start this school year with an entirely new board. So the SBO has already been an important partner in arranging a family movie night, which was terrific, helping to welcome our new kindergarten students and supporting our teachers during conferences with an incredible dinner, the dinner and the, just the layout that they got for teachers in need. We have a book fair planned for next week. As you can see, the stacks are ready to go. And we have additional family events scheduled throughout the school year. In addition, our SBO is continuing the tradition of a flurry of wishes to support families in need during holidays. One of our school goals this year, and Dr. O'Neill will see this, is Ben, is really to make clear and regular communication with families a priority. And if, if you allow me to say so, I think we're off to an excellent start using Parents Square to share a weekly JCS journal every week. And the teachers themselves, particularly the Little Lancers teachers, so if you have a pre-K student, they're awesome at sending what's going on with pictures, what's happening in the classroom, which I think is really important. We've made a couple of changes. So every weekly JCS journal is also posted in the news section of the school website. So parents that aren't using Parents Square, no way to find it. And we just started a brand-new JC Somini's School Facebook page. So utilizing social media to get more buy-in and information out to the community. I've gotten some interesting comments from grandparents, looking at pictures of, of what's happening in our school, which has been really, it's just a nice way to share the positive news of our school. So from my perspective, it's been a really positive first two months of the school year here at JCS. And we're all really looking forward to a terrific year. And I don't know if you have any questions or? It's okay.
Everybody have anything? Well, good.
I'm far removed from the JCS. These are the only updates I gather. But Parents Square, JCS, we didn't have any of that.
But you still have those little chairs.
Yes.
These are probably almost as old as I am.
They're original. You did. They're original.
Every time I Man, I miss this school.
Yeah.
This is my, my oldest is going to be 21 tomorrow and I, I remember him sitting in these chairs and being in library with them. And these are some great years of both of my kids. This school was awesome. Yeah. I feel that way about other schools, but this one's super special today. Yeah, so.
It's where families start.
Really, yeah.
This and LGN, it's a feeling of home.
And I'd be remiss to say, Tom Higgins has been amazing in helping me. And we're really trying to make our schools feel like sisters. I, I would be really, he, he helped me tonight. I was like, okay, what types of things you normally talk about? Because, you know, my former dish was a little different. And he's like, oh yeah, Paul, he's what I talked about. And so it was really.
It's nice when the kids come together in fourth and fifth grade. This consistency with these, you know, this school and LG, so I think that's great.
I can't speak highly of that.
Yeah, it's great to hear.
And we didn't have that continuity for a lot of years. So it's, it's good to hear from both sides. That was a big issue at the time, especially like my kids are Sherry's youngest. So these kids came together for the first time in fourth grade and short of having, maybe they played a sport together, they didn't know each other. So seeing a little collaboration, it's good to hear, especially after many years with kids in the elementary.
Great. Thank you very much. Number five, student spotlight, MCAS recognition, Dr. O'Neill.
Great, thank you very much. Let's see next, Mrs. Anderson, fill my stuff in front of her. So thank you all for coming tonight. I'm very excited to be recognizing some of our Norton students for their performance on last spring's MCAS exam. It's kind of a funny day for us to be talking about MCAS because last night the state voted to remove that as a graduation requirement. So to be determined on what that actually looks like in practice as we move forward. So the MCAS exam is given every single year between third grade and eighth grade and then again in 10th and at the high school in the areas of ELA and math, and then also in science in grades five and eight. And then either nine or 10, depending on when you take your coursework. So there's a lot of tricky questions on the MCAS exams. There are a lot of practical application for students. You know, analyzing data, analyzing texts, there are writing samples for them. And so it's something that a lot of students can struggle with. Not everyone is a great test taker and we have many students that, that struggle with the exam. So tonight, I am so excited to be presenting to a few, few students that actually scored, had a perfect score on an MCAS test last spring. So it's, it's really incredible. You know, we always talk about MCAS as like one component of the data that we look at to make decisions about teaching and learning. But I think it's really important for us to recognize these students tonight for their hard work. So first, I would like to call up Evan Drain. Evan is a grader. And Evan got a perfect score on the fifth grade science test last year. So we get hold together, so mom and Benson can get a picture for us? Mom and dad, do you want to come up and get a picture of myself? Perfect score on the fifth grade science test. All right, Benson, you're going to get this one for us too, right? Congratulations, Evan.
Thank you.
Awesome, done. Next is Ben Kessler, who's also a sixth grader, been here tonight. Oh, that's okay. We, we do deliver certificates when kids can't judge. But I think it's important for me to share with you all that Benjamin received a perfect score on the fifth grade math test last year. So that would certainly not be me. I'm not a great mathematician, so amazing job. Okay. Aaliyah Hopkins-Crook. Currently an eighth grader and last year got a perfect score on the ELA testing grade seven. Moms want to come up in? Oh, it's all right.
You sure?
I didn't do my hair.
All right, now I have Rogan Lovettier. Rogan, come on up. Rogan is currently a junior, but last year got a perfect score on the high school biology task, which is incredible. So congratulations, Rogan. And dad, do you guys want to come up? Come on, do it. Now I have Ben, he has a cabbage. Ben, come on up. After all these years, I hope I know. So Ben is also a junior, but last year got a perfect score on the math test. So congratulations, Ben. Come on up, on and down. Now, see, I know. We have Tyler Winkus here with us tonight. Okay, so Tyler is also a junior and also received a perfect score on last year's 10th grade math. So amazing, amazing. And finally, Kayden Smith. Kayden is a junior and got a perfect score on last year's math MCAS as well. So congratulations. Come on up, Dad. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations to all these students. Just an amazing, remarkable accomplishment. You guys have a lot to be proud of. So congratulations. And thank you for coming to join us tonight.
Is this a record for the most perfect? I, I've never seen it. I think it was awesome.
So we've only done this one or two other times. Um, I think we've only done it maybe one other time when Dr. Bia was here that we did this. But we actually also had a third grade student that got a perfect score, I believe it was on ELA last year, but they're no longer with us in the district. So I'd be remiss if I didn't share that as well. Evan, do you want to share something?
Yeah.
What's up, Bud?
I also got the perfect score on the math star test one.
Ooh, amazing. What is this? I almost had a heart attack. That's amazing, Evan. Nice job, Bud. So congratulations, guys. This is amazing.
Anything to say?
Congratulations. I, I always, I have a junior daughter and I, I joke with her that I would be lost to taking it. I never had to take the MCAS until that old. And I think I had this conversation with her. She's like, yeah, it's pretty hard. I'm like, could tie up. And I know, I mean, I know there's a lot of stress around some of these tests. I've lived through the fight with three children that have had to take it. One of them was, you know, ironically was voting for the first time. It's like, oh, this MCAS question. And we had a discussion about it, but so to Dr. O'Neill's point, it's kind of a unique night to be celebrating very good opportunities and work on these tests. I'm not a fan of these tests. I've said that publicly and privately. But they do give us good data, which unfortunately we have to go by sometimes. But congratulations to everybody. It is truly remarkable that you do so well in these tests.
As a terrible test taker myself, I'm super proud of each and every one of you. It's an awesome accomplishment. Nice job, guys. You shouldn't bless yourself. That's good.
Great.
Thank you. You guys are more than welcome to leave.
That's the fun stuff.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Congratulations.
All right, next up is discussion and vote on surplus material. Mrs. Evans.
So we are seeing the world choose schools of surplus items that are no longer useful in the district. And we all have resale or salvage value. Following items are ELA personal books and materials at the elementaries, JCS, LGN, and YL. Science materials from old pilots at the elementary school that we found actually here. JCS, assuming there's some, that the LGN. Outdated instructional materials for world language and math at Norton Middle School. When Dr. Ackerman and I were looking at some of these were from the 90s.
It's funny, you brought up the point before, you remember being in these chairs. My guess is if you went through the books.
And some CDs that are outdated that usually
Yes, you're correct. CDs are outdated.
You don't have any way to use them.
So we are asking for the requested book.
In motion? All those in favor? Seconded by Justine.
Yeah.
All of them, fine. Thank you. That was funny. One of Colton's friends. From the parents, whatever, he sent home. Kid took out a book at my meeting.
Was it from the library?
From the library.
We have a lot of beautiful books in here as well.
All right, next up is first reading on the school choice policy update, Dr. O'Neill.
Okay, so this past summer, when we were going through the school choice process from start to finish, with the first time for NPR to go through that whole process, what we noticed was that our policy and our actual practices weren't necessarily aligned with, you know, the day-to-day of how we actually work. And what we also found is that the way that our policies were written, it was requiring us or asking us to do a lottery at the very end of the year, which quite honestly, that doesn't work for families if they are waiting on a decision about school choice. So therefore, we are proposing some changes. Number one, that in line one is that instead of May 1st, every school year will determine the number of spaces. We'd like to do that by April 1st. And that instead of by June 1st, to have our open meeting that's required, we would do that by May 1st. So that would be a change to the committee and its process. Ultimately, we would just be moving that item up on our agenda. And as we did last spring, committee votes to whether or not we're going to continue school choice for the upcoming year. And then we can also specify the number of seats that are available per building, per grade level. And then it's up to our office to fill those. A new item that we are adding here, I apologize, you can see they're, they're misnumbered, but we'll fix that in the final draft. We are asking that all school choice applications be received by June 15th. This allows us to, if we have more applications than the number of spots available, we are required to run a lottery. Cannot be done on a first come, first served basis. So we would do a lottery around July 1st for that purpose.
So quick question. This may be semantics really, but if we have to do a lottery for the number of spots, or does it go down to the number in that grade? Like, for example, we have 100 school choice spots, but five are allocated for fifth grade. Do we have to do a whole lottery or just say?
It would be just for fifth grade. So it would be done per grade. So what we would do is we would, you know, put all the names in like a random name generator or something very high-tech, I'm sure. And we would draw, only draw for the five second grade positions that are there. And that would only be if we had six or more applications. If went on, you know, July 1, when we go to, to the lottery, we only have five applications, then it's very simple and no lottery needs to happen. Or if we only have three applications and we have five spots, again, very simple. If after that, we have more available spots, we can run another lottery on August 1st, but only if they were responsive. I think personally, for our office, doing this earlier makes it much easier. I would imagine for Mr. Barrett and the other principals, for Vinnie and Casey, for students that have IEPs, like we want to make sure we have the right place, classroom placement and the right services set up for them. All of those things. And our previous timeline was just way too late.
Yeah, so two questions. If a student is currently enrolled in school choice, did they have to do an application every year?
No.
Simply notify us we're staying?
They, they are considered ours until graduation. So number five. Any student who's accepted for admission is entitled to remain in the district until graduation from, from high school. Except for this lack of funding. And then the one down the bottom, these, those have always existed within the policy. You know, not just for the gain against race, color, religion. So our old application asks to see the student IEP and also ask for the home language. We're actually not allowed to ask. So just something that we need to update in our.
So the, the comment, and this is more again, might be semantics, is if we're looking at our calendar, I think we need to be aware of an outgoing school committee versus an incoming one.
Agreed.
And I would want to see, maybe we get this done, one of those last meetings of the current school committee.
Yes.
Because I think there's a lot of moving parts. But even one new member, this next year, there could be three, we don't know. So I think to put this maybe as one of the last of the current committee and kind of go through that every year because we have, with everything.
Yeah, so you guys will need to vote before April 1st, based on number one. So I, I don't know the date of the election off the top of my head, but it's usually in the teens-ish. So we will absolutely do this before that. We'll probably do it on our last March meeting.
So just trying to process this.
Yep.
So if a student or family submits an application and you have to do a lottery, so you pick them, say Suzie Q, whatever. And then the family then says, okay, well Suzie Q has an IEP. Um and then the family then says, okay, well Suzie Q has an IEP, here you go. And then all personnel look at it and they're like, we can't service this IEP. We don't have the program or we don't have the room for for them in the program at the time. So then you come back to them and you say, sorry, we can't fulfill this. And then you redraw another name, so.
We actually ran into that, a very similar situation this year, um and we ended up having to hire another staff or some support program.
So if somebody comes in under.
So we cannot say no. Or not.
So even.
Even if we don't have the program.
Correct, that is, that is.
So. So this is, this was the scary moment when Pam and I were on the phone with the Department of Education. And that it's it's actually interesting because I'm not really sure how they saw our application or what happened, but ultimately someone called the department bed and they're like, you can't have this. If you are school choice, you're not safe. So what would what would technically need to happen is we would figure it out, find a program. Or we would work with the sending district to place that student out of district. We would have all of the educational control over the IEP and programming. And the sending district would have the financial.
So what did it affect us?
So.
But it's like, why wouldn't you just, I don't understand why people wouldn't just do that through.
No, but I think the the premise of being out of district is hopefully they achieve their goals and they come back to the district. And then we would have that student pass the choice, student on IEP to be serviced. Like, when we send them out of district, the ultimate goal is to. So I think it's almost, you know, I can think of a few towns nearby that their special education system is not up to par. But we have agreed special education system. So we might be the middleman, but it only might be temporary. We don't have that financial burden. It's more administrative burden. Which.
Correct.
You can make the argument, yes, because our administrators are handling it, there's a cost, but it's not the sending, you know, the sending district is to get.
So previously, what we had been doing was collecting the IEP. Vinnie or Casey would look at it. There was Casey, and she would say, yes, we can do this, or no, we can't. And what when we did a no, we can't, and said, I'm sorry, we cannot. That's it. So it was a very eye-opening conversation with Department of Education.
So now that conversation is, we can't do it, but here's your options.
Yes, yes, so we moved up all of these timelines to deal with those situations, yes. So, because to me, like, June fifteenth is a very reasonable time. To say, like, if you want to come to Morton, you need to have your application in by June fifteenth.
That's actually generous, yeah.
Yeah, and if you are looking to move your child to another community, you know that.
Yeah.
Um and so we won't be accepting after. And so it would give us time if if that situation were.
And so, so, I'm sorry, just to clarify.
Yeah.
So um Suzie Q requires X program.
She sounds adorable.
And we don't maybe, maybe we have that program, but we are full at capacity, if you will. We would then be required to hire somebody if staffing would, yeah. And that could mean a special ed teacher and or para and or both, and or whatever.
And or ELA, and or.
Correct, I'm just trying to.
We would open a whole new program.
We would not open a whole new.
We would need, that's when you would go back to the dist- the other district.
So but it wouldn't be like, it wouldn't be like a classroom teacher position, like that wouldn't come up. It would only be in a situation like because if you have twenty-two kids in a room, you can put twenty-three, right? So it would be a specialized program, right? So it might be an additional parent. But again, we can put in for that through the reimbursement process. So I think what I'm hearing is that I think we want to be really strategic, because upcoming year, when we think about the placements that we have. Um yes, we have, and I'm gonna say off the top of my head, maybe twelve fewer school choice students. Than we did last year, and I apologize, that's that's a ballpark number based on number like data that's. Yeah, so I was gonna say, off the top of my head, it was those kids, you know, aged out, graduated, we brought some other kids in, um and the head case.
We've also had similar situations, Vinnie and I were just talking about, um, and such, we said, is that we've had similar situations where a school choice, our students, library school choice, we weren't able to support it. But it's the sending district actually tuitioned them in to us, so, yeah, so we've got, we've had, we have one or two situations where public school districts are. Collaborative tuition rate for any students to be here.
And that's the more in good situation.
Yeah, so for example, they may not have program in their school, like the small town around here. And then they they kind of go, oh, well, well, look at school choice, and we have a conversation and, you know, they have their other kids. So it's, that's typically, if you're gonna run into a situation like that, then we just work with our partners and often get.
And that's been very beneficial for both districts in those situations, and you know, Vinnie and Casey have great relationships with all of the districts around us. And it's just a conversation.
And it's been, there's been situations where we've called on them, and say, this isn't really working.
Yep.
What do you think? And we kind of work out stuff that.
Right, two questions. One. Suzie Q comes into Norton. If we can't ask for the IEP, can that student show up on day one?
No, we would need to see it ahead of time, because otherwise we couldn't.
I guess the, so, so.
Until they're select.
Okay, so once they're selected, then we can say.
Nick, it's exactly like the vocational process, if you think of it that way, right? Southeastern is not supposed to ask to see anybody's IEP. They have to make the decision off of their application process. Then the IEP is presented, and then.
So now. So if.
Yes.
Atterboro, student from Atterboro comes into Norton. We accept them into second grade. We get their IEP, we see that we might not be able to service this student. Our options are, correct if I'm wrong, find a way, meaning hiring staff, which, again, we don't probably doesn't happen too often, but, but that is a possibility. Or two, our administrators have to go back to Atterboro administrators. Work out a thing, where does it say that Atterboro has to pay for this kid? But if it's five grand?
No.
No, 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 no.
No, pay for the collaborative or out of district.
So even, let's say, say for you, we have students who have come in to the district, and then we note like, our, our uh programs have not been able to continue to service them, so our recommendation is for an out of district place. Soon as it goes there, then we manage the, the programmatic stuff, but that sending district is that.
So do they, does that student, is that, are they still considered a school choice student for us, as part of our school choice numbers?
Yes, yes.
Not to bring this down into money, because it's not. But it is, like, so we get paid for a school choice student because our team is
Yes.
in charge of their programming, if you will, but the out of district fifty, sixty thousand, whatever it is, is paid for by there.
See, isn't it so much better just to keep your head in the sand and think you're doing everything right?
Alright, so Atterboro sends kiddos.
Yeah.
We did, we got five thousand dollars, hypothetical, hypothetical, five thousand dollars hypothetical. That student, we then can't service, we send them out. Atterboro now pays. Why would the student come here? Why wouldn't we just say, hey?
So there's, there's, there's a lot of reasons, to be honest. Um so we actually have a couple of kiddos that we're in a situation with right now, right? So um they um either Atterboro wasn't supporting out of district or or special education placement or program at the time. And they came to us and they, they've come to, and then we, we did our best. And then we decided to do an out of district placement. Um legally, we don't have to call Atterboro and say, hey, by the way, this is what's going on, but because we like to maintain good partnerships with them, like I theoretically, I could be like, I'm gonna send them to Perkins, and it's gonna be a Harvard of whatever, you know what I mean? But because we want to maintain those positive relationships, we'll call them and say, hey, this is what's going on. It's one of your students, I don't know how you want to handle this. So they'll come into the table, they'll come to the table and come to the meeting with us and try to to negotiate the situation or um offer stuff that they have within their own district. Yep, that's happened as well.
And that's actually happened. Uh we had one student that moved back to their home um sending district because they had a program that could support their needs. Um or and sometimes we have kids that we decide that we're out of district, and then that home program was like, you know what, or sending district, it's like, yep, you're absolutely right. Would you please try collaborative? Um but they, but they get that bill and it's um then we try to work collaboratively with them moving forward to try to get the kiddo back into district as soon as possible or um but it's, it's really about building those relationships and that collaboration between us and the sending district and making sure that we're doing what's right for for kids and all parties involved, really.
Alright, here's the next big one, something to figure out that one. What happens with this? Can we see students' records before they apply?
No. No, we cannot. However, we can ask for them after they've been accepted. And basically, um any felony charges, we take.
Good. If we have multiple detention suspensions, whatever it may be, you applied to come through Norton. Our district has no say to say, no, you cannot come here because your score's horrible, your behavior's terrible.
Again, it's just, it's the same as the book at school, if you really think of it that way. It's the same process. Right, that, that, you know, and that's not, I mean, at least at the high school, it's not.
Well, and I was gonna say, nine times out of ten, that's not, that's not the issue. Like, every once in a while, yes, we have that issue.
So, piggybacking off of next.
But.
What about, like, an expulsion? We know that from both that.
Somewhere else.
The ten-year-old got a felony.
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking more at the middle school slash high school level.
Yeah, no, but if they were expelled, you can only expel a student for a very serious infraction. So therefore, I mean, with the way that discipline laws go now, it has to be a very, very serious infraction.
How would you know though?
They would have to share that information with us. So we can still ask for attendance, we can still ask for the IEP. We can still ask for the discipline record, we can still ask home language. Just it has to be after they've been accepted.
So that's the big change, is we were getting it upfront.
Which was, we weren't supposed to be getting it upfront all along. But but if we were to get that and they had, they were expelled for something, we'd be like, I'm really sorry, we need to rescind your invitation.
Oh, we can do that.
I mean, if that's what, if that's what it is, you just can't say we can't service your special.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Alright. So if, as soon as it was expelled, we could rescind their invitation if, if the reason they was expelled was something that was that significant.
So it's not a just a phone.
Everything else is gonna try and give you the admissions.
So nauseous at felony, and I said, well, no, that's, that's really the only reason you can get expelled. Oh, very different than in all of our days.
Who's in charge? Is the, is Department of Desi in charge of school choice? Like, who sets these rules?
If, if I had to guess, and I'm.
Yes.
She. I'm going to go and just give my honest opinion. I think what they're trying to get policy in place is that every student applying for school choice off the bat is getting a clean slate, which is fine. And then if things come out or things are revealed, then maybe we do have a way to rescind the offer.
And I think it's very important for you guys to know that none of this language is actually changing for our policy. But the only thing we're actually changing are the dates. Everything else has already existed within the, within the regulations and within our policies. Um and and this, our policies go straight from the math state. What unfortunately we were doing is we were collecting information
To make a decision.
To make a decision fire, which we were not.
And I can see people having a problem.
And I can understand that, right? Like, you know, when you know better, you do better.
Yeah.
And so therefore, we're trying to fix the, the issue of, you know. Previous.
Number six, any student who's accepted, the condition blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Except if there's a lack of funding for the program. What does that even mean?
Um I, I guess if we are really in dire straits and, you know, having another thirty teachers, then we'd probably have to have some serious conversation, although we also have to remember, with those students goes, you know, he's got two million, or he's got two million dollars this year, school choice money to balance our budget. So, when the school choice students leave, so do the funds.
So I mean, you'd almost make the argument, the funding of program is basically sending district tissue, not ours.
But it just makes no sense, if it costs us.
If, 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 for example, Dan, we had to cut another bunch of teachers again next year, and so we are now going from this is very hypothetical situation, we're going from seven fifth grade classes down to five. And we have fifteen fifth grade. I, I don't know if that would be.
Yeah, like who, like it's just so.
Who determines?
Who determines? What, because like, could we have said, hypothetical? We just cut thirty teachers, but my all school choice students will.
I think you would have to really be able to defend it. But and again, the, the one thing that makes me nervous is the fact that with, with our school choice students, there goes that funding as well, so I mean.
I, I'm not, correct, I'm just saying.
Hypothetically, I, I don't know the answer.
Correct, I just don't know who.
But there is someone in charge of school choice at Desi.
So is number five, the N six, I assume, are these like the um school choice policy items from like the state?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all, all of that is regulatory like.
So does that mean, like, except if there's a lack of funding for the school choice program, like if the state decides. Hadari, there's no more school choice, we're not giving you, we're not giving districts any funding.
Can we get clarification on that?
Yeah.
I think that's kind of very important, that if all of a sudden we're staring at a year, two, five, ten years down the road. And we have two hundred school choice kids, and all of a sudden, we're looking at cutting a ton of teachers. But that might be a legit scenario at some point.
But, but then our policy would essentially go to, we're not allowing any.
But this says we can, but this says we can kick the kids out, we're here.
Which is awful.
And I, I'll be crystal clear, I do not think that should ever happen. I was just always under the impression the law states that you can't do that. But now, I'm reading that you can if you have no funding for the program.
I'll, I'll bring it with me when we speak next time, but the language that we're changing.
Sorry.
Just, no, it's fine, we, we could, we could do this all, we could do this all night, but um but any questions or concerns about the language we're gonna change, is there anything that you guys would want to see changed for draft two?
Are you sure you want it to go through June fifteenth? You don't want that sooner?
I think if we're not making decisions until April or May, I think that six weeks is probably fair, that May first, and then and then we can, I, but I would not go any further past that.
No.
You know, that was Pam and I kind of came up with that date together, just because it's really Pam that does all of the legwork when it, when it comes to um the application process.
And that gives us time for like, high school schedule, for example.
High school schedule, placements, all of those things. As long as you guys feel like that's.
What, what is it now?
It used to be October first.
October first.
When we first started school choice, it was October first. Alright, so no vote has to happen on that night. I'll bring it back, I will get clarification for you on what that actually means in terms of funding. Um and, oh. Okay.
Um, next up, first public, uh first reading of public participation at school committee.
Okay, so um this policy here is something that has come in front of the committee before. Um this was worked on by Dr. Baguette and our legal counsel, uh to provide a little bit more of a robust um set of guidelines for public participation at school cases. Our current policy is just very um brief, and they basically saying that they can reach out to the chair if they want to be put on the agenda, um but there's really no guidelines around actual public comment. Um for the last few years, we've followed um a pretty, you know, Simple process where if there are people in the audience that want to um comment on any of the items or have items at the end. Usually the chair will give people a couple of minutes. Um I know a few of you have you've served in that role since we've started. So this um follows the guidelines around public participation. And a lot of it actually does come, so this first paragraph and these first three bullet bullet points actually are from our current. Um language, so written correspondence may direct to the committee. Um seven, two hours in advance to have something put on the agenda. Um and that we can include a public hearing at any time if you so wish. I do recommend keeping those things because it's a good way for people. To be able to access the committee and it also gives them a process of how far in advance we need um. Communication in order for us to perform. The, in the middle, that's all pretty similar g- language there. So um then it kind of goes into the role of of the chair um and how the chair has oversight over the meeting itself. Um, so this is, I mean, quite honestly, as you can see, it's much more comprehensive than what we currently have. One of the things that we're seeing across the state of Massachusetts is a big pushback in certain communities around um public speaking. Um there was a gentleman in Natick that played the ukulele um at every meeting for over two years and would make up songs about. So it's. Having a more comprehensive process in place. Really only benefits you. Because it puts the chair in charge of allowing someone to speak or not.
I I think kind of going back historically, I think it's number five is. It has to be something we have control.
Agreed.
In our purview, like, for example, if someone says my kid got, you know, twenty minutes of recess and they should have had twenty eight. And that shouldn't be something, you know, if it's, you know, I have an issue with the way Dr. Anya spoke to me. Possibly in our purview. You know, so I think that's the, that was the thing, because we've had people, you know, in meetings that are just. You know, kind of going off the rails a little bit and. It's something, it's a directed complaint or personnel issue that, one, we're not going to discuss in a public meeting. It's a personnel matter that's not within our purview because there's only four or five positions under our purview. And unfortunately, you know, a lot of the personnel issues are start with the building principal, start, you know, so through the process. And even then, the, it still doesn't fall under our purview. And that's the, that's the critical part of this policy is, you know, I'm all for free speech. If it's free speech in a way that. You're not just speaking to speak and hear words and spread the word. It has to be something that is relevant to this committee.
And I think that's the really the important part about it, and that's why I I like the fact that number five is is very specific about what. Purview of the committee is, um and that the fact that we will not take, um you know, personnel complaints. Uh this is not the forum for them. Um and so I I think that part, having that really clearly spelled out. Is a good thing for all of us. Um and then, you know, the fact that it it gives us the time um to really um. Kind of adhere to like we're gonna just do this a certain amount of time and that and that's gonna be it. Um but. We can make any changes to this and what I'll do. So this would, what we, what would happen is that. Instead of having just kind of things a little bit more willy nilly, at every meeting, we would have a fifteen minute public comment period. That would be moderated by the chair and once that is over, public speaks. And that's it. So you guys could do that at the beginning of the meeting, you could do that at the end of the meeting.
Is there, I'm scanning it quickly. Is it? Is the public comment? For what is on that current agenda? So the public comment be like, last week you guys talked like, could someone say next week or next meeting? They can come in and say, my public comment is about you guys talking about public comment two weeks.
Yes, they totally do.
Because I think that was the other issue is having something in the literature and the policy about. It has to be on the current agenda to be discussed in public comment.
That's what we do now.
So that, this opens it up a little bit more. So this would kind of, um, you know, if we had a parent that wanted to come in and talk about school. School choice conversation. And say, you know, this is then the school choice program has been a huge asset for our family. These are the things that we want to share with you. They could do that. They have three to five minutes. They could share that. Anything that's more lengthy, they would have to, I I. If you choose to speak.
And to me, the policy is kind of. Ambiguous because we're asking them to put it on the agenda, but then they could come in and under public policy and talk about it even though it's not on the agenda.
So don't forget, in public comment, you don't have to respond. And in fact, I often encourage you not, just because it doesn't need to be a dial. It can be a, thank you very much for sharing. If they wanted something on the agenda, the committee A would need to decide that it's worthwhile to put on the agenda. Just because someone requests it does not mean it has to fall on the agenda.
Just seems like a loophole and I don't like a policy that has.
So as I said, this has come before the committee. This draft has come before the committee previously. Um Nick and Dan, oh, sorry. Dan and Sherry, I think you guys have voted on this one previously. When we come to legality around public comment. We, let me get a little bit more clarification for you, but I think. We really are like supposed to have like that public comment time. We could say, I mean, you could do it at the end. Right now, it's suggesting that you do it at the beginning before the items on the agenda. You can always do it at the end. Do it based on items on the agenda.
Because I think, sorry. I think doing it at the beginning kind of defeats the purpose because they want it. If public comment is truly over after that public comment period, then they won't have discussion on something on the agenda, then it would make more sense to happen. Because otherwise, it would be allowed public comment based off of our agenda. And then they chose to not follow the rules and have put on the agenda then. Back to the one policy that to me is avoided.
They're more aligned with this than our current.
I want to, you, Mansfield pretty much asked this, and you have fifteen minutes to start. No one's there, you just start. My my thing is, is. The history of what we've seen with people coming in. Kind of know that they're coming. It's very rare that we have people come in and say something at the end of our meetings based on some agenda. We kind of know, this is gonna be a hot topic, we're gonna get people here to. To me is looking at at the five of us, we are representatives, whether we, you know, however you want to look at it. Elected reps. Of the of the residents. So to me. Having to go get it on the agenda, make sure we're doing it, like to me, it just doesn't, I don't know, to me, it just doesn't flow right. We make people sit around for two hours to then, you know, give their three minutes of talk, like. Uh to me, it just doesn't flow. It it just seems like we're all doing things and then we're just waiting for the inevitable bomb to blow up. Like. If we started it with like, okay, hey, we're opening this up. Anything else that anyone want to say anything, you know? To go for, you know, and I do think what I do like about this is. Me being chair is gonna be very different from Dan being chair or whatever, and like that gives us the ability to allow the chair to moderate the meeting. That's kind of their job, you know? So I look at it as from standpoint of, there's a few things in here that I would like to take out, to be honest with you, but like. To give people, you you want, we want companies, we want people's voices to be heard. I would much rather have someone come here than. To, you know, jump on Facebook or shoot us an email, you know? And like another thing, not that this happened, hopefully it never does happen, but like. How awkward would it be if you wanted to, you know, talk about Jen and how horrible of a job they do? Are they really gonna reach out to Jen and myself saying that? No. Come here, say it. You know, but like, so there's just some, there's just certain things to me, it's just like. I'm all for, if you have an issue, and again, I totally agree with Dan, that has to be within our purview because if not. What, this isn't a sounding board either, you know, but I just feel like, hey, you have something, you want to bring it up and get it up your chest. That's just what we're here for. We 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 want to, you know, and I think what I've seen, my time here anyway, at least is is, you know, and even before, is. When people talk and they're here, tend to get a pretty good response in terms of like, we hear you, we understand what's going on, you know? That makes sense, whether it be, you know, positions, the positions we just put back in. I mean, was anyone thinking about putting teacher learning ship positions back in until they came? No, I wasn't, you know? So like, that's the type of stuff that I feel like, by doing a public comment right in the beginning, get it out of the way, we can then get the, you know, them. Now that now they know, hey, it's six to six fifteen or, you know, six to six twenty or whatever, and they're out of here. To me, it might open up some doors for us to hear from our community. So that's, that's what we're doing.
I I do like that aspect of it. I'm just curious if like. Again, there's a hot topic item, so we have the open fifteen, twenty, whatever minutes. People come and talk, and then let's say somebody wanted to talk about MCAS or whatever. Do they get to speak again? After we do the MCAS item, like are we gonna have like several public?
So my thing is, I think, I think the public comment is directly made for that. I think if people stay. Just gonna say, no, you can't say anything?
Spent the time and was here, I mean, it's something to say, I always let. Yeah, so I I think it's up to the chair. If they speak again in the meeting.
And and that, I mean, and that is pretty much in here as well, is the purview of the of the chair to decide if you want to continue allowing conversation.
Correct. I just think it gives us a little bit more. When someone complains or an email or a text message, hey, we got fifteen minutes, getting out of our meeting, come on down.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we want to be a board that doesn't. No, you know, have people come and and. Because again, I've said it for a long time, I think when you collaborate with other people and you listen, things can be learned and things can be, you know, changed for the better, so.
I think the one thing that, if if there is a time limit. That needs to be held in conscience because, you know, as you mentioned, you're a chair now, someone else will be chair. Call it April fifteen, whatever, but the, there has to be consistency because I know like you in the past have said, oh, I'm not, I'm not gonna time you. That's fine. But if all she says, there's a time limit, then we can't have people just, you know. It's like the Gettysburg Address for forty five minutes. We can't have, like, I I think we should, we can't just have public comment be. Chaos. You know, like they can't be like, I hit a pothole on my way before. What about the high school traffic, which?
But again, that's the chair moderating meeting though.
And that's why, that's my biggest thing is, is and I don't mean this in a negative way, but like. You can't be for free speech and then tell someone you only get two minutes to speak. But if you're making good points and you're sticking to the topic, and I'm sitting there being like, that's a good point, that's a good point, you go for five minutes, good for you. You're probably gonna lose my attention within fifteen, twenty seconds, to be completely honest, but like, once you, once you go, like, you're either. You're either on the topic and you're and you're making points or you're not, and that's where the chair can say, okay. We understand your point at this point. We're gonna ask you to, you know, finish up in thirty seconds, you know? So that, I mean, that's kind of how I I see it.
I'm just wondering though, like, should there be a line in here that like public comment is for, you know, you come, whatever? But if you want to address a specific agenda item, you would wait until that agenda item. Like I just want somebody to come in and be like for first fifteen minutes and they're gonna talk about agenda item number four. Like, we're gonna just have that, would we, you know what I mean? Like, I just kind of think, that's great. Something along those lines, just so we're not having a conversation twice or, you know, like. Does that make sense?
Yes, because I think what you could do, you could do it two ways, just kind of thinking out loud. If you wanted to start the meeting with public comments. And then at the end, like your last agenda, agenda item could be, you know. Called public response to agenda or something like, like, you know, so they're still, they don't have to wait two weeks to go to the next meeting to talk about. We just talked about because public comment without beginning.
I mean, right now, like if if we know there's a hot topic, usually there's all of our audience here and then. Typically, Nick, the chair, will open up and say, all right, who wants to, you know, does anybody want to talk about this? While we're on the agenda item, like I think that is still appropriate.
Can we? Again, just kind of thinking out loud how this is gonna go. Can they identify if they won't speak to an agenda item? So, so say someone came in tonight and said, I want to talk about MCAS recognition. Whatever it is. Could we say? Because I just, I don't, I just don't want to. Long because that that was why we had some long meetings because we had thirty people showing up. And a lot of it, the problem at the time was it was out of our control and, you know, going back a few years back. State says you're in a mask, you're in a mask. That's where a lot of this came came out of. You know, and unfortunately, there's differing opinions on that, but again, it's not, it wasn't in our purview, but we let people talk on it. You know, and we have people with scientific experiments, it just, it delved into a slight bit of chaos at some meetings. The meeting took very long.
Yeah, but a lot of stuff isn't in our purview though, and and people I think still have the right to come and talk to us about it though.
No, that's what I'm saying is, public comment has to be reserved for things that are in our purview. It can't just be a a sound off.
Well, I'm not saying a sound off board, but if it's something relevant to the schools, why wouldn't we allow them to?
Because if we don't have control.
Well, the chair will have control.
No, I'm saying as a committee, if it's not something we control.
So perhaps maybe something that we may not be aware of. We're hearing about it on Facebook.
That's my other thing, right? And I get the purview because I totally understand. Wherever it falls into. But at the end of the day, do you know what the purview is? That's what everything is always going to come down to, and we are the ones to set the budget. So when you like, whoever controls the money is the one who controls the purview. I hate to say it that way, but that's, that's life, that's how it goes. Any company, the CFO is involved in every decision. Why? It's all about money. That's, it's the world we live in, you know? So yes, if they're gonna come and complain about a teacher, we're going to say, that's not on our purview, we're gonna chop that down. But anything else, like you said, we don't want to be a sounding board, but like at the same point, we might not know.
Things in here about personnel that that's specified that that can't. So I just, I would rather hear it here than on Facebook.
If they're coming here, be careful. They're typing behind their keyboard, yeah, they might care about it a little bit, but they don't care about enough to put their face in a public.
So is there something you guys want taken out of this before the second reading?
Me, I would cut anything that has anything to do with time. I would cut anything about fifteen minutes. We have a very hot bu- topic. I would not be comfortable as a chair saying, we got to fifteen minutes, sorry, we're cutting all of the opinion off.
But unfortunately, you're not, not saying this means like you're only the chair, or as long as you're the chair. The next chair might say, I want it to be fifteen minutes. I think we have to have language because Nick Schlecker's not. So I mean, and but we can't always keep coming back to policy for each chair's discretion.
You just keep it fifteen minutes and then you have the, whoever the current chair is, has the right to allow more.
Yeah, so it actually does say that, I'm just, um. Number six, however, the chair and his or her. Make great extensions of time and extending circumstances.
But that's around the three minutes.
That's okay. But I mean, still, regardless. I think we need to have a time there because if you don't have, like, we're gonna do this for fifteen minutes, then we're gonna, like, our meetings are gonna be.
So, but that's what we signed up for. No, we didn't.
As elected officials, we're not for hour meetings because people will talk about things that aren't within the purview of the school committee. If someone wants to complain about a pothole in this.
But Dan, at one point, but let's let's throw a perfect, right? Let's just say we have, they're all, everyone's mad at Jen. We have forty people coming.
That's an executive session.
Why don't we just leave it at the fifteen minutes and the chair has the right to allow extra?
No, that's, yeah, I don't, I just don't.
It is there in number six, it's the second sentence. Um however.
No, it should be a number two. Right? During a fifteen minute public comment period. Some discretion of the chair.
So is there a number six? So it does, it can apply. The other part, um unless the chair determines that there is good reason for rearranging the order of public meeting. Yeah, I mean, we can just take the sentence from number six and put it in number two.
Yeah, that's, would be my, that was actually one of my suggestions, is like, could we take two and six and kind of combine? So that way, kind of all the time is in one.
Anything else that you guys want me to change for the next time? Again, we don't have to vote on this one tonight. I will bring it back, um.
I feel like we should have invited to mess for the next one.
Oh, it's his favorite topic. I know, Dr. Ackerman was a little bit anxious about presenting this to you guys today after the big vote.
It's true. We were, we were talking today and I'm like, just our luck, right? So it's a student achievement report, it's the MCAS report. And here it is, it's gonna be removed, so. Uh, interesting, interesting timing. So I want to start by saying. Whoever you watched last night on the election, watching all the big board and the screens back and forth. Whether it's Bill Hemmer, Steve Kornacki, or John King, I'm not close. So I just wanna.
Pay no attention to the man front of the board.
I just wanna lower a little expectation. In terms of, in terms of my skill, but.
Reading.
But but all, all, you know, all kidding aside, um. I just wanna step in and kind of reframe, you know, this is my second year at Clear Norton. And I know that their MCAS conversation has been kind of a longstanding issue. And I know some people really value it, other people really don't. And I respect all positions. The one thing I just want to say with regard to MCAS is. It is helpful for us because it is a common universal tool. So that we can look at how we're doing and crosswalk that with other districts. So I position all of this by saying, this is one point in a much larger context. We're not defined by MCAS in any way. Mr. Barrett, student representatives talk all the time. About the quality and the care that our school offers, and that's hugely important. This is one small piece, but important piece of seeing that puzzle. So. A little bit of a history lesson. We had the early MCAS. It's known as PARC. Then we had the legacy scores. And then all the metrics changed like twenty eighteen because the test became more difficult. To bring us back into focus, we then had three years with kind of a different cadence between. Going through twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, full tests, no tests, half tests. Trying to make heads or tails of that data longitudinally. I'm not sure how helpful that is. So the real focus, I, and I'll preface for the presentation tonight is. The actually now three years of consistent administration. In a consistent format. So it gives us a little bit of an opportunity to look longitudinally at how we're doing. I think as importantly. All the work we've done on curriculum adoption. And that's academic. So recall, when we began, just as recently as a couple of years ago. We did not have what would be considered like high quality evidence based instructional materials in a number of areas. But between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, we've on boarded. Stepping stones. Mid school math. Amplify ELA. Character strong, but we're beginning navigate three sixty in the high school this year, which is social emotional curriculum. And additionally, this has all been foundationally guided by our work around IMTSS. And I want to make sure that in the context of all the work that we do, just examine that this is one part of. One spoke of a more comprehensive way. And so IMTSS is still about right on time interventions based on student needs. And we're finding dedicated times in schools. We're trying to use the best data and be most consistent and make sure that our PD programs really match. The curriculum adoptions that we want. And I feel like as a collective that we've really involved all of our staff, so our teachers, our administrators, our central office folks. To try and really make this both a bit of bottom up and a bit of top down. So that we all kind of come to consensus on those best pieces. So I'm gonna walk us through some kind of familiar slides that those of you that have been on the committee have seen before. And then for the folks that are a little bit newer, I'm gonna take a slightly different tack for the second part. Because I think it's interesting and helpful data to look at longitudinal pieces as well. So I want to start with really like what they call that thirty thousand foot view. And then work into some of our grade level cohorts. And then I'd really want to end this with talking about student growth. Because that's often something that may not get the attention that it deserves. So we've all been in the airplane, we're looking down, we're seeing what's below us. So the first several slides are going to be, I think. Largely familiar, but these are kind of big picture snapshots in time. So can everybody read this reasonably well or see it on your screen? So we really want to focus our efforts and see these blue and green bars be as high as possible. And one way to really capture how we're doing is to take. The combined exceeding expectations and meeting expectations bar and combine. And the more weight we have on that left hand side. The better that we're doing. So if we look at our last year's grade ten cohort in English Language Arts. If you combine the district, excuse me, if you combine the meeting and exceeding, we're fifty six percent. That is just, um, one point under the state average fifty seven. Is the state the best comparison for us? No. Because it's so diverse, but it does give us a broad base of, in the big picture, where are we lining up with our other districts in the state?
So Brian, not that we have it here, but. And maybe you have this. Can you look at? The data set as a whole and look at like, like districts? Like, say, I know historically we compare ourselves to like our TBL companions.
Yes.
Because that's kind of like, and we always say like, we're not gonna compare ourselves to Adalberton Mansfield.
And this is, we can, and this is where it gets a little bit tricky. So there's a metric called the dark districts. Which are by Desi's comparisons. From a socioeconomic status, from a demographic status, from a size status. That looks similar to us. Is it a perfect match? No. But it is one baseline for us to compare ourselves over time to other districts.
I just think we always do ourselves a disservice looking at what the state is versus us because it's just.
I agree. It's a, it's a very narrow, it's a narrow measure. And I feel like it's an excellent starting point and something that maybe could elicit some more conversation and kind of win a win more on. That data that that we find. Similarly, when we look at math, again. Norton last year, grade ten mathematics, forty eight percent meeting or exceeding. Forty eight percent versus the state. So squarely in the big picture sense, right at about those state categories. Moving into, um. Science, technology, education. If you look at grade ten. Our district meeting and exceeding fifty two, the state was forty nine. So just a tick above where the state is, um, for the grade ten STP. Then looking at the broadband of grades three to eight ELA. So again, Norton was, um, meeting or exceeding. And this is combined, grades three all the way through eight, forty percent meeting or exceeding. And that's just above the thirty nine percent state average. Again. These aren't scores that, um, we don't want to improve, we most cer- we most certainly do. But they kind of start as as a broad basis of comparison. Then if we want to look at grades three to eight math. Norton is forty percent meeting or exceeding combined. And then the state is forty one percent meeting or exceeding. So again, very similar picture in Norton than what we see across the country. So one way to look at growth and to look at student progress is to look at something called cohort data. And a cohort basically means if we are to follow a group of grade three students in twenty twenty two. Then grade four students in twenty twenty three, and grade five students in twenty twenty four. It gives us a little perspective of how they grow over time. I want to offer as a preface to this. We have a number of new curriculum endeavors, which is wonderful. One of the things that happens particularly for a test like MCAS, which measures a very long window of instruction. You may see a little lag at the beginning. And that's okay. Typically, and Mr. Barrett had referenced this earlier. It's a two to three year period so that you get comfortable with the program. You get comfortable with the methodology, especially if what the new program is. Is substantially different than what you have in the past. And that really is, it's, it's okay. We want to kind of dive into that. So I have a few slides. Elementary, then elementary, the middle, and then middle and middle, the secondary, just to give us some grade bands to look at for this age. So if you look at our grade, um, our elementary cohort data. For MCAS, um, as I referenced earlier, there are those four categories. So if you look at our ELA cohort data. From grade three in twenty twenty two to grade five in twenty twenty four. Those meeting and exceeding scores are down a little bit over time. And those generally, we have more students moving into the partially met category. Um. And then really, um, very slight change in the not met category. So again. Curriculum adoptions tend to be a lagging indicator. But slight, um, downward trend over these seasons. Then again, looking at the math, um, scores as well. If you look at the three year cohort, the grade three in twenty two. Through grade five and twenty four, we've had a bit of a dip.
Brian, you might interrupt. So my immediate first thought when I looked at this data and I was like, oh, well, I read it first thought was, oh, God. But then my second thought was really around foundational skills for kids. Coming out of lower elementary and into that upper elementary. And it made me think about, okay. Is this an issue of students not necessarily mastering some of those foundational skills? Before they reached upper elementary and now therefore we've kind of, we have this bigger gap. Of where students are are lagging behind. And it made me think a lot about our IMTSS process and, you know. Thinking about who are these kiddos? Who are these kiddos that are seeing dips in their performance? They, like, they were. Doing enough, doing well enough to meet the standard or exceed the standard when it came to third grade. But the work is getting harder. It's, you know, they need to put a little bit more into it. What skills are they lacking? Right? Because I think especially when I think about. This particular cohort, so. And and I say this because this is my son's cohort, these are our current sixth graders. So they were first graders. In March of twenty, of twenty twenty, when everything closed. And if you weren't a reader in March of twenty twenty, when the doors closed. You probably were not going to be a reader until the end of second grade, if not the beginning of third grade. Because we were doing so much online learning for that cohort of students. And first grade is such a critical time. For students in in mastering those foundational skills. So this makes me want to really. And I get jealous of Dr. Ackerman because he has to do the fun stuff that I love and I get to deal with. Crazy ass sometimes. Um, but it makes me want to dive in and look at student specific data. And then it also makes me want to look at. Standard specific data. So where were kids doing well in third grade? What were the specifics? Standards and where are they now falling apart? And are those two things connected? Because I would put some money on it that I bet they are. Um, and and so that's what those, these things make me think about, like, from using my, my teaching and learning path, um. But it's discouraging to see that dip, right, from third grade to fifth grade because our, our hope. Is that as they get older and as they move through, they're gonna get. More skills and more work. And I think about that a lot with these kiddos.
Do you ever think our district is a little different because of this, it's a whole different experience? That they go through so much.
We've historically talked about that because.
What do you ask?
And that's why I was saying earlier in my comment, what's Barrett is. That like, and Sherry can probably test this too, is like, when we used to look at LG and JCS, they're completely different. You know, and I say that meaning it's almost like. LG is off on its island, JCS has its little island, everything else is in the middle that seems to be a little more recent, but.
But it's also just a transition. Kids coming to the school, they're in and they're out, it's, they're learning a whole new thing and then you're throwing all this on them too.
Historically. If you look at data trends, and I've been doing this as far as I've gone off for a long time. You always see a big dip in grade four. And then you start to see it climb back up in grade. Every single. Without fail. Um, so I don't know if it's a transition here. The fourth grade test. Um, many years ago, we used to have a really significant writing portion. That went along with it, which I always felt was, um, a big factor for students because all of a sudden they have to write. This five paragraph essay that has to be cohesive, it has to have proper mechanics, you have to use evidence from the text. It was a big ask for fourth graders. Um, so I always used to blame, like, or say that could probably be a factor of it. But I do, I do think it's a transition for kids.
And I know as well, I had a nice conversation with these six deeds today, who's our math interventionist. You know, as Jen talked about, the kids that were not readers, uh, when COVID hit. Similarly, the sophistication of math problem solving and the. And and the idea of having to go through multi-step processes to come. It's something that just for a lot of our kiddos just didn't crystallize at that time. So that is going to la- lag a little bit. We are, and you will see in some future slides. Our SGP rates are, you know, are are decent. But I think that's something that's just going, we're gonna have to be patient with all that coming back. I have every confidence we'll get there because again, the foundational pieces of curriculum, professional development are there. It just will take us a little bit of time to help recoup that loss because those kids, you know, missed. Two hundred and fifty days of in-person instruction.
So.
I'm curious with, um, stepping stones. And I, the way that I understand it is that it has this kind of like spiral and holding, right, um, piece. And I see it in the, um, sheets that I get home with my son, um. When a student, when you increase to the next grade. Is the teacher sort of like doing this kind of initial assessment, if you will, of like. Here, this is where we're at. Oh, it looks like they've sort of missed some of these pieces from, let's say, second to third, whatever. We need to fill that in before we can like push on in the curriculum. Yeah.
We, we say universally to our, to our teachers. As a starting point, we have to meet our students where they are.
Right.
And we start from there. And inform our instruction based upon, because we are trying to be data driven, looking at those assessment pieces. And then during intervention blocks or small group times, trying to then fill those gaps with individual or small groups of students.
Sorry, um, so every fall, every student takes the STAR assessment for reading and math. Um, and then, but there are assessments also built into stepping stones, like there's an end of the year benchmark, there's also a beginning of the year.
I'll just say, wasn't that?
Quarterly.
Correct if I'm wrong. That was one of the selling points.
Yes.
For that, for that curriculum was because of the end of the year and then the teaching needed the kind of figure out.
kind of figure out like, all right, hey, you know, eighty percent of this went well, we need to look at this a little bit more going to the third grader.
Yeah, yes.
I remember that kind of being big. So when we look at, I know we've we've had some curriculum changes last couple of years. When we look at curriculum, we also comparing that to the MCAS subjects. Because because I just don't think, part of me is like, you know, you always hear the, oh, you're teaching to test. Well, yeah, because that's our benchmark. But when we look at curriculum, do we make sure that those MCAS subjects are in that curriculum?
We do. So in order to be rated as high quality on curate or ed reports, all of our curriculum materials have to cover all content standards. And those content standards on the MCAS match the content standards that we deliver via our instructional materials. So a vendor, a stepping stones, an into reading wouldn't even be a consideration if they did not comprehensively teach those standards. So the elementary was a a, you know, a little bit next. We do have some positive changes for our middle school because one way we wanted to look at this data was then to say, if you look at some elementary folks like grade four and twenty-two, and then moving through grade five and twenty-three, and then looking at that first middle school year experience in ELA, here was another basis of comparison. So that we can see that the number of students in that meet or exceed category ticked up nicely. We had nine percent growth in 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 that area. And um I think that's helpful, and I think that bodes well. One thing to think about, and this is an initial point, and it will have to be fleshed out over time. Those students in twenty-three in grade five did not have, you know, they used the old Lucy Parkins units of study. But then in grade six had amplified ELA. How much impact it has, we won't know. It's like, it will just take a little bit of time, but that is something that gives us a a nice positive uh data. If you look at the elementary to middle school math cohort, again, similar, um in in the aggregate, the combined um scores from grades four through six, from twenty-two to twenty-four, we saw a nine percent growth in that meeting and exceeding category. So again, grade five in twenty-three used our old program, but grade six in twenty twenty-four used our mid-school math program. So again, is it causal? We don't know, but at least it's an initial data point to give us some 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 information. And then if we want to look at that ELA cohort data, again, starting with grade six in twenty-two, so these are students that have been in the middle school for three years over a three-year period, having the same test each year. Again, very, you know, nice growth over that period. So if you look specifically, those students in grade seven did not have amplified ELA, but they did in grade eight in twenty twenty-four. So you see some nice jumps from the exceeded and met categories from twenty-three, moving into those exceeded and met categories in twenty-four. So again, an initial data point, but showing some some reasonable growth. Similarly, we want to look at the middle school math cohort data. And this wasn't as positive as the ELA cohort data. But again, if you're looking at grade seven, those students did not have mid-school math in twenty twenty-three. And did not have mid-school math and, excuse me, did have mid-school math in twenty twenty-four. We did actually see a dip. Again, if you're noticing a trend here, it's that it's a little bit variable, right? Some areas it's gone up and other areas it's gone, it's gone down. So we're going to continue to do, we've done with curriculum professional development and build the capacity to really continue to move those schools forward. The last cohort I wanted to look at, and this is a little bit of a different cohort, because I think as Dr. O'Neill had stated earlier, in M for MCAS for ELA, students will take it in eighth grade. But then they do not take it typically in ninth grade. And then again, they take it uh in grade ten. So you notice here if there's a jump from twenty-two to twenty-four, that that would be the reason. And again, you know, we could talk a lot about the reasons behind it, MCAS graduation requirement, expectation. I don't know if that's part of it or not, but some very strong growth from those grade eight students in twenty-two to the grade ten students in twenty twenty. Similarly, in math, looking at that cohort data, grade eight in twenty twenty-two versus grade ten in twenty twenty-four, we've seen some nice positive change up to a total of eight points in that meet and exceeded category.
So this is probably a silly question, but I'll ask it. When it comes to MCAS testing, is there like study guide or review period that the students go through? Because I remember like, again, I never took MCAS, like, you know, you had a study guide for SATs, you had a study guide for PSATs. At least kind of, is it more just, or is the review as simple as, these are the type of questions you're going to see, but they don't go over like the content?
So they they actually, MCAS has what's called a release items bank. And so their test items, actual test questions from previous years. So it could be a compare and contrast essay. It could be, you know, solving a linear equation. Whether or not that appears on the following year's test, we don't know. But those are available. And I know um I know at the middle school, they definitely intentionally practice those. Um I was able to see grade seven last year, they did an MCAS ramp up and they combined it with cornhole and basketball to like make it fun and interactive. So it people definitely do practice them. I know in visiting classrooms, particularly the upper elementary grades, um I will often see, for instance, fifth graders working on that five paragraph essay that that we have referenced earlier. So, yes.
And and because it's a computer-based based test now, it's just not multiple choice like the way they used to be. So um there is a practice test that kids can take on their front books that will show them what the questions look like and help them kind of um practice how to use the tools, how to move things from one category to another. Um it's very, very different than just picking up.
It's well beyond Scantron sheets and woodbooks that. So the final thing I wanted to look at is student growth percentage or percentile. So simply put, every student or cohort group is assigned an SGP number between one and ninety-nine. One means that that student scored at or better than one percent of their peers. Ninety-nine meant that that student of cohort group scored better than ninety-nine percent of their peers. Why do we look at student growth? Because if Mr. Barrett on the twenty-four MCAS scored in the exceeded category and I scored in the not met category, examining our scores as a basis of comparison isn't really that helpful. But if Mr. Barrett and Mrs. Russo also scored the exceeding category in twenty twenty-three and then took it in twenty twenty-four, we would want to compare their scores because it's more accurate barometer, how much progress is made. And typically, we should expect about one years of growth, one year of growth for every student every year. And so what you'll find is the numbers range from, as I said, one to ninety-nine. Fifty is right in the middle. If you are within the band of the thirty-fifth to the sixty-fifth percentile, that is within the typical range. Below the thirty-fifth is considered low growth. Above the sixty-fifth is considered high growth. So we always aspire, especially in light of all the earlier conversation, of having the highest growth percentile possible. So I just wanted to take a look and share with um with the committee, just what some of the SGP has looked like over the last couple of years. So if we look at the grade eight ELA SGP, the mean SGP has been hovering right around fifty percent. We ticked just above that the last couple of years. And so that squarely represents typical growth for that eighth grade cohort. The math SGP, again, right around the fiftieth percentile has kind of stayed in those forties. But again, squarely within that typical growth range.
Just just a kind of clarification. So on twenty twenty-two, that was the eighth grade cohort, sixth grade.
No, that was the eighth grade. They were, it was that year's eighth graders.
So we're not looking at cohort data anymore?
Excuse me, sorry. Thank you. Yes, and then.
So this is a, those a hundred and eighty-six kids, yeah, a hundred and sixty-six kids or whatever.
And I wanted to include the number of students because
Correct.
you have some variance and, you know, the fewer students you have, the greater the variability with school changes. And then kind of the last was again, SGP, that would be grade ten. This has been fairly solid. We were above the fiftieth at fifty-five for twenty-two and twenty-three. Took a little dip below in twenty twenty-four. But in all of those areas, you see that our student cohorts are making what are considered to be typical. We aspire for higher, but we're currently within that typical in average. Similarly, for math, you look at the cohort for math, thirty-nine percentile, which is on the cusp of low growth, but some nice bounce back. Fifty-one SGP in twenty twenty-three, and then fifty-seven last year, which is solid. So I just wanted to take it in the last couple of minutes because I think we need to celebrate the things that we've done well. And a lot of people at all levels of our schools, our teachers, our principals have worked really hard. And we were dealt a tough hand with COVID. That was a very difficult time. So I want to acknowledge the work that faculties have put in to really help us. We really saw that solid growth from that elementary, excuse me, math in ELA, that elementary to middle cohort. We saw some really solid growth with that uh three-year ELA cohort. And then that strong growth from grade eight and twenty-two to grade ten and twenty-four. These are not in your slides, but I also wanted to reference. Jen and I were talking about data and doing some data analysis. If, when I went back and looked at the item analysis, we overperformed the state averages pretty consistently in almost all grades three, four, and five writing questions. So that was a nice thread to tie together that saw Norton perform well. And then similarly, when I look at the geometry clusters in grades three, four, and five, Norton students perform at or above consistently through those grade years. So obviously, we have areas the elementary math in the LA cohort, we had that little bit of a dip, a little bit of a decline in the middle school math cohort. And the SGP scores right across grade eight and ten are right about an average of fifty. That's okay, but we always want to shoot for high. So we're proactive. We're always thinking about this. All of our work is grounded in continuously supporting our students academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. We always focus on the whole student. We want to continue. We've had a real rigorous intensive professional development process with our instructional materials, and we want to continue that. Very important, we have an ongoing um and consistent professional learning cycle opportunity. So as an example, we onboarded into reading in August. We had our teachers do a six-week interval of instruction. On that October twenty-fifth day, our vendor, uh Mary Ann, Dr. Mary Ann Perry, spent the day with us in the district. So we went into classrooms, we saw good things. Then the afternoon was all breakout groups with all the educators uh teaching to read. We did the same with the amplified ELA and the same with stepping stones math. We have contracted again to do a third round so we can continually continuously grow and evolve in January. And I budgeted through our essay grant um as much, not as much, but I've tried to build a nice cushion because this is a hugely important piece so that we can continue to build that bridge. Something that's going to be coming soon, and Jen had referenced this a little bit earlier. We are going to um continue to crosswalk our STAR data and our MCAS data to help us make decisions, to help look at the specific standards and look at areas for growth to support our teachers and to look at instructionally. We started a lot of that work over last summer. We had our leadership team analyze data, and we're going to continue to do that as a group. And then continue to bring that to our students. And of course, the pool isn't as deep as it's been, but we will continue to flesh out great opportunities. I know, I know a lot of information was just not thoroughly used to long term, but if you're looking at twenty graphs and twenty-five minute presentations, if you have questions, if you want more information, conversation, like please know individually or as a group, I I would welcome that. I I know there's a lot of verbiage in here that isn't familiar if you don't deal with it all the time. But I I would want to, you know, make myself available to anybody if you were interested in talking about it. So I I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Talking Brian about MCAS.
Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I had a question. Um, I was just curious, you mentioned here, like, you looked at the geometry questions and the writing items. Were there any um particular items or clusters that you saw where you were like, ooh, we tagged on these?
We, we were fairly consistent. There wasn't this an outlier where we were demonstrably below. Not to overly peek out on it, but.
Yeah, well, yes. That's the preference we don't.
If you go into Edwin Analytics, which is one of the tools that that we use, they do a double line graph. So they will track each question individually. They'll have the correct state response rate in red. Then they will have the correct Norton response rate in blue. And so you can actually go through item by item and look at what what the results are. We did not have anything that like, on a quick visual, stood out as being, you know, an, oh, my goodness. We were pretty con- pretty consistent in terms of where where we were.
I got a few questions. One, so what? When we look at this, kids who are not, or sorry, partially meeting expectations, what does partially meeting expectations actually mean?
So it means that they have acquired some of the grade level standards that are necessary, but that there are other standards that they have not. So one of the benefits of being in Massachusetts is that our state standards are the act, are the highest. Um, so it is a, it is a rigorous test.
So now wanting to go through, obviously, now this is going to change, but our grade ten kids, for those students who not meeting expectation partially meeting expectations. Does that mean they can graduate? Or does that mean you have to do additional? Does that mean they can graduate? Or does that mean you have to do additional things, retake, retest? It is.
So the actual scale score for passing in grade ten is in the partially meeting range. Students that do not reach that passing score, for lack of better words, have multiple opportunities to take retakes because this assessment happens. I'm sorry?
Just on that section.
No, they would just, it would just take ELA or they'd just take math. But there are also, Vinnie could probably, sorry, Vinnie, probably give you a little bit of info, but we also have what's called a competency determination for students that have a typical time passing. We know not all students are great test takers.
So we did do that for, I don't remember the numbers, I'd have to get back to you. Yeah, a few kids, especially in the math area. We had one particular teacher who really, we took those kids in, they had a dedicated block. Additional, for some of them, additional math block, for example. If they didn't complete it, see.
It's a portfolio.
It's like a portfolio. Kind of like, you know, I know you've heard about special education portfolios, they're different in terms of, of, you know, pass, but for these kids, you can actually pass.
And is it unlimited opportunities for them to turn that? So is it really like, for example, I know my daughter took a literacy test. She had multiple opportunities. So is it? Well, I guess my question is, do we intervene? Or do we say, take another test and really kind of like reconsider it? Or do we say,
No.
let's work with you a little bit and then you.
Now that we have interventions. At first, for a while, we didn't have any interventions. And now we have interventions, so we, we do intervene like that extra math class that.
So, so for example, our third grader, third grader comes in, gets partially meeting expectations. What is the, what do we do in that regard? Like, what, like, I guess. No, no, sorry, I'll say.
So like that, so the third grade students, let's say they finish at JCS or finish at LG. They will go to grade four at Henry A. A. Y. And so those teachers will have that information. What currently goes on at Yale right now is, this Benson references earlier, they have the IMTSS or RTI law. So those students are broken up by skill, by, with teachers to work on specific gaps that they may have. It could come directly from MCAS. It could be from a different area. But that's part of what we're trying to really evolve with IMTSS and with our culture around data to really have that pinpointed level of finding help on numbers and operations in base ten. I know that I can get.
And it's also important for us to remember that that particular third grader that did not do well in some particular strands, that's one opportunity for them to show that they're learning, right? They, you know, perhaps are working with the teacher and, and really getting those geometry skills on a day-to-day basis. And we're like, oh, that wasn't a bad day for them. Or maybe the question was worded weirdly or something along those lines too, if they can consistently show you that they, they have mastered.
And like, I just thought, for lack of a better word, when we see those third grade tests, we obviously have a STAR test, we have what you were doing in the classroom. So do we kind of triage?
Yes.
Yes, to be like, wait a second, yeah, this is a, you know, we're not just, you know, saying, hey, this kid, whoa, we gotta put him here. It's more of like, all right, hold on, this might have been a bad.
Well, because we, we don't have the resources to do that with every kid. I mean, ultimately, so I mean, we do, we have to use other data points to kind of like narrow your field.
Yes.
And especially in third grade, it's the first time they've seen this assessment.
Yes.
It's super overwhelming for kids. One of the things that's nice about the parent report is you get, you get parent report and you, and it's like, it's almost like a little booklet. It's four pages. And it will tell you your child's ELA score, where they fell in that range. And then it will show you every single question that was part of the ELA assessment and the standard that it aligned with. And it will show you the ones that your child got wrong. So we have that same information as educators. So we can say, okay, you know, Jen did, you know, didn't do well in these particular ELA standards. So it, it gives you a little bit of a clearer picture and parents can see that too, which is. It's extremely, even for people who know what it is.
Sure, let's just hypothesize, we gotta, we'll check out, but the third grade. Yeah. But can we look at it, like when you see those questions, do we have like a snapshot of what the district did on question five?
Yes.
Yes. So you can kind of see like five, six, seven, eight, all right, we are struggling in comprehension. We need a, okay, so it, so it breaks it down very.
It does. And like that double line graph that just Ina asked earlier is so helpful because then you can actually go on the line, see what the question is, and then crosswalk it. You can actually see what that standard was.
And, and that's actually exactly how the Yale School is doing their winter learning time. Like they use the MCAS data and they say, okay, for this fourth grade group, where do they have a lot of trouble? And then they also use STAR data to do the same thing. And they'll say, okay, this, you know, for these next couple intervention cycles, we're going to work on these three things. So they're using all of that data and they're, they do a really nice job. They've kind of been a little bit, they've been moving with that for a little bit longer.
Go back, go back to grade ten. So ELA in grade ten this past year, we have between partially meeting and not meeting, we get forty-four percent of our students. How many students have we not graduated in the last five years? Can we have like, I mean, is it zero from, from MCAS or from MCAS?
Handful.
Yeah.
In, in the last five years, I'm saying only a handful.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I would say, I mean, the high school does an incredible job of working with the students to figure out the competency determination for kids that have a difficult time passing. I can only think of two off the top of my head, but you know better than I do, so.
And then the same, so again, these come out kind of like now. Yeah, so a kid who wasn't meeting or didn't, or didn't pass, if you will, didn't pass the test now. Now with the new determination, the law of not being a graduation requirement, does that take effect this upcoming year?
It does not.
We have no information yet in terms of when it will, but we do know that any of our current seniors still have to meet that determination for graduation at this time.
The guidance that came out today in the community said no earlier than December.
Of this year. No earlier than December fifth of this year, but they still said this graduating class will have to meet the competency determination.
So, so the class who just took the MCAS.
Our.
The juniors now, the juniors now are, we have no idea.
We don't.
More likely than not.
Are you that surprised that Desi doesn't have?
This is the issue when it comes to ballot questions is they're very, if something passes, they're very reactive to. Like there's no plan.
There's no legwork ahead of time.
Yeah, because the purpose of a ballot question is an outside group entity can do the work and get a place on the ballot.
And, and ultimately, I think there's a lot of people that misunderstood part of the ballot question. MCAS does not go away. We are still required by law to administer MCAS. There is no opt-out for students. Students are required to take it. We are required to put the test in front of them. The vote that took place last night is only for the graduation. But the actual MCAS is part of a federal regulation, no child left behind, that we have to have a state system.
And then, okay, so.
I just work.
So my fear that would not be, just that of not being a graduation requirement, how is that, how are we? How are we going to make sure that our kids aren't just coming in and going, check, check, check?
So I have significant concerns about that, and that was part of the reason that I, I was not in favor of this ballot question because there wasn't a plan. Right now, MCAS has a huge, huge amount to do with accountability systems for schools and districts. Those accountability systems are published. Realtors use them to market communities, to sell homes. We are put up against, and that's, that's how they decide which schools and districts need support from the Department of Education and which are commendations. You take away the accountability piece of students needing to pass it. And we always tell kids, it's, it's great practice for you, it's great practice for you, but it's really about us and how we're doing, right? Like you guys won't have to worry until you get to high school. But ultimately, we're going to be judged on something that everyone is told to do.
Well, then I guess from an instructional standpoint, how do we also keep our teachers? That's a whole other aspect of this as well, to make sure that this is relayed from the teachers to the students that this is still important.
And I think the best thing that we can do, our job as educators are to deliver standards and skills. MCAS is meant to measure the acquisition of those skills. So from a teaching and learning standpoint, I know the term teaching to the test has always been a popular one, but we really don't do that. We really teach the standards and the assessment just measures the acquisition of those standards. So from, from my perspective, it's, we still have content standards to deliver, whether it's tenth grade geometry or it's third grade multiplication, it's still the same.
That's the thing, you just, that's the side, yeah, the other side of that is every grade up to all high school, they've had that impression for all these years. There's still, those grades didn't have an end result to take that test, whereas a high school software has.
And I feel like we always give our MCAS presentation in this room. I feel like I've given my presentation in this room a hundred times. And that's why I've always stood here and say, we can say it's not the only thing. We can't say it doesn't matter. Because ultimately, it does matter from our perspective in terms of, you know, the hoops that we have to jump through. And also, it's, it's a relevant data point to see how we're comparing with others.
So kudos to Brian here too, I think, because I, from two and a half years down, committee, like we've definitely gotten way more data driven, I think, from a standpoint of like, hey, this is what we're looking for. And I think the committee's kind of made that a priority to a certain degree. What are we looking at? Do we do something very similar to this? From our STAR reports, from any other type of assessments that we do over the grade levels?
So like, MCAS is dense. STAR, believe it or not, is even more dense with the kind of data that you can pull. So we could certainly look at, like if we wanted to look at it from a progress rate, that would be a logical first step. We can do it from a standards acquisition lens. So the work that we did as cohort last summer is we looked at the end of year state standards acquisition summary report so that we could measure an entire year's interval, teaching and learning, and then put ourselves in the position of if that data is from grade two and I am the incoming grade three teachers, we actually modeled this together. What do my instructional groups look like? What standards did I and did we identify as those first touchpoints for students? So the answer is yes, we can do a lot of things with STAR.
Yeah, I would love to see, because again, I think Jen just said perfectly, but MCAS is the end all be all. But like, from my standpoint that I've always seen is, is like, this is the only kind of data we get to see, you know? We don't, we don't see student growth. You know, we obviously can see, you know, perfect scores and stuff like that, but in order to actually see it, to see, hey, where, where, where are our gaps? You know, where are we doing really well? How can we do this better? If we can get something similar to this presentation, whether it be STAR, I mean, I'm sure it's funding other assessments, I would probably go off, it's wild. I think anything that we can get into our hands, even if we shorten it down to five or six slides of like, hey, here's some growth, here's what's going on here. I think that's going to be huge for us in terms of, you know, because ultimately, it's our student success, you know, what is going really well, what is going, you know, where do we need to grow? And it gives us the ability to say, hey, wait a second, that curriculum is working. Let's keep rolling, you know, in three years, four years, five years, you know, nothing runs out.
And our vendor for STAR, they're called Renaissance, they have a whole analytics platform. At times, it's a little bit clunky at times, but you can actually pull a lot of really good longitudinal data from as well to track, you know, schools even over, over time.
Correct. And I think to Audrey's point, like that, giving, getting extra data from the fourth grade, we might be able to kind of start, not by putting a finger on it or pinpointing it, but you might be able to start saying, hey, wait a second. There are our gaps, you know, this is what we need to work on from foundational learning standpoint. This is where we're falling short. We're seeing it in fourth grade because it's going to change, blah, 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 whatever. But I feel like the more things we can get, you know, from, from, from data, what our kids are doing, I think is very, very. Anything else? Good? Um, next, last one, other business, anything else to bring up?
Um, like calendar stuff. So next meeting, we also have a joint meeting, same day.
I don't think that's happening.
Yes, we'll, we'll be at the middle school the next day. Do you know the list of joint meeting dates?
No.
I don't know.
It was originally thinking about that day, but two weeks ago.
So delete it. And the next one's definitely at the middle school?
Yeah. Yep, and then we'll start at town hall in December. On the eleventh. Yes.
Anything else?
Kind of make a plug for the C two Foundation's toy and gift card drive that they're, they're putting together. So we have our, our staff working with families who identify those students in need. I think the really important thing to understand is this toy drive goes directly to students who are in our schools here in North. It's not a toy drive that goes out to, you know, like Toy Scott, which is a wonderful organization, but this actually goes right to students here in our schools and families. We're working with, just not, C two's kind of driving it, but we have health and human services, we have since Paul, like there's a number of agencies, we're part of that. So that, that toy drive is going to be going on, it's going to be, I think it's the twenty-third, they'll be up in front of the hay.
Yep.
But they also have drop boxes at all the schools and a number of the businesses, I won't read them all, I know it's gone out to. You go to City Albertos, like the kind of, but all of the ones out there, there's a lot of places folks can, can drop off in terms of, of toys for, and then like I said, we also give cards for high school age students clothing. And then C two will be working with some big donors who are looking to pick up entire families as well. So I just, just wanted to get that out there. It's really, really nice thing. I, I sat in a meeting yesterday and there were so many different, I was going to say last week, I should say, uh, uh, just so many different members of the community and different boards and, and different volunteers. So a real truly a community event and anything we can do to support it. I know it's kind of, that stuff about staff. Different ways.
Except donate money donations.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so.
Uh, I got two things. One, did we, how we got the reinstated new positions for, not new positions, sorry.
All of our positions that were reinstated, stating have been posted. The elementary specialists have almost all gone back to their previous FTE. We are working on librarian. We actually posted for my four librarian because Mrs. Germus is currently a reading teacher and her mother's life at the other point four. So we posted for that and we're doing some stuff there. I came to an agreement on Friday afternoon with the NCA around future leadership positions. We are going to push those back to July. January second, which is when we come back from the winter break. And with pushing that back till January, we're able to bring back all of the roles instead of select, which is really great. So I'm going to share that with you guys, a lot of the rationale around it, especially because it's so focused around curriculum at the elementary levels. We really had a lot of conversations about what made the most sense. So we were able to do that and we're also, they, part of that conversation was that they really would like to negotiate the roles and the stipends as part of our contract negotiations this year, which I actually think is a really great opportunity both for the teachers and for the administration. And so some of the principals and central office admin will sit on that working group with them. And that will be part of our revision for next year, which will be really great. And then we also posted for all those positions that was going to start in January. I know we have a bunch of interests in the art position at North Middle School. We're in conversations about the music position. So, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we'll have everybody back for January.
What about the reading?
Those are all been posted as well. Yeah. And as I mentioned last time, those were all long-term positions. And as I mentioned last time, those were all long-term positions. I didn't want to be only teachers out of classrooms in the middle of the year, it's not what's good for kids, so.
What, uh? Was it? Negotiation piece of it, but was it well received?
Yes. Yeah, so and I think ultimately the, the back and forth with the NTA around the teacher leadership positions was just the, the. The duties of the role and how challenging, especially at the elementary level, how challenging it is to be a full-time teacher. And also supporting curriculum and data for second and third grade. So, um, we were able to come to an agreement that I think both sides are really happy with. And, um, as you heard at our meeting at the Yale School earlier this year, just, um, you know, some of the challenges that. You know, exist without those positions, so, yeah.
The last thing, just so the committee has it, um, tomorrow is our first ground rules meeting with the NTA. Uh, for negotiation purposes, so obviously those, that will be negotiated in private, but it is our first meeting and we'll keep you up to date as we go. That is it.
They're not. Um, they are requesting, um, they'll have speaking representatives and they'll have silent representatives. So they will obviously, when we leave and everyone conferences, they'll, you know, be engaged in the conversation, but they'll have, um. Just one or two people that is speaking.
Entertained motion to adjourn?
Not everyone at once.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.